Welcome to the North Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, August 20. Just to start off, we had an email that I believe was sent to the board with a document on a public hearing that had been closed. I just want to reiterate to the board, I think, hopefully I caught it in time to make sure everybody knew that we shouldn't be opening those. Any document should be sent directly to Paul, that's just for the public to know. We shouldn't be receiving documents directly to us, especially after a public hearing is closed, so that's something that we, as a board, can't consider. So I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page with that. Does anybody on the board have any questions on that, since we have counsel here? Pretty straightforward. We do have one bill for SERPID. Have you all had a chance to take a look? I'll have Paul just explain what that is.
Yeah, SERPID, they're the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District. They're our regional planning agency, and we, from time to time, contract with them, such as with the master plan. But they're also helping usher this economic development, this is a federal agency, US Economic Development Agency, and they have been working on a grant for the last two years to help get infrastructure funds for the Blue Star Business Park. So there's work that needs to be done to usher that project through in order to get the public improvements that you all are familiar with. So, you know, the town's working with the applicant to try to get some federal funding to help offset the costs, such as widening of the road, the intersection, and so forth. So, SERPID is helping coordinate the efforts to keep that moving, so that's what this bill is incurring. And this is also, their portion of it was funded by ConDyne, so in essence, it's kind of like a peer review.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on that? That's the only bill we have for this meeting. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the payment to SERPID for $533.91.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Now, onto the meeting minutes for August 6th. Do we have any additions, changes, corrections?
Yes. Um, never mind, it makes sense now. I had a comment, and then I realized what it was discussing.
I have one note. It's on the third page. What we talked about, 24 hours isn't correct. The storage is six hours, and the inverters will run until, I thought he said between 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock. He didn't just say 10:00 o'clock. Between 9:00 and 10:00.
Right, he did say, I just added until 10:00, just to, but it can certainly be changed. He did say 9:00 to 10:00, yeah. So, change that.
I guess, depending how technical we want to be, it's not necessarily six hours. Battery storage may operate for up to six hours, something like that, because it's not...
Yeah, I think he did say up to six hours.
Yeah. All of those times that we talked about with them were in relation to, like, June 21st, maximum sun, no clouds.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have those two corrections of storages for up to six hours, and the inverters could run until 9:00 to 10:00 p.m. No other corrections? I hear a motion to approve with those corrections.
Motion to approve with corrections.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and for the record, go ahead.
For the record, I just want to acknowledge that Kevin did provide a signed Mullen form for the meeting he missed on August 6th, so he gave that to me yesterday, and that's been filed with the town clerk, so that's, he's covered.
Excellent. And, we're going to move on to the public hearings, but before we close the meeting tonight, just, if I forget, remind me to, I'd like to schedule some more meetings into October. I think they were waiting for us all to be here, so. Okay, we have the public hearing for special permit 486, 60 West Main Street, Cumberland Farms. It's my understanding that Cumberland Farms is not here tonight, but, Paul can explain this a little better.
Right, so I've had conversations with Tom Reedy, who is the attorney representing, he's from Bacon-Wilson, representing Cumberland Farms. They're not here tonight, but they wanted me to communicate what we had discussed, and in fact, you have an email, in fact, I apologize for the length of this, but if you take out the first grouping of emails, Tom's is right on top, and it'll put in his words what they're trying, what they're proposing to do, or what their plan is. And I just want to reset this a bit, because it's been over, well, probably close to two months, so. You recall the issue when they presented in early June was, this is within Zone 3 of the drinking water protection zone, so, just as a brief, Zone 3 is, there were three zones for protection of water. The primary purpose of these, the Water Resource Protection District, is to prevent, you know, seepage of some contaminant that could ultimately get into the well. So, Zone 2 is that area drawn around a well that could directly drain right in. Zone 3 is that area that doesn't necessarily drain directly to the well, but it could get into Zone 2, which could then make its way in. So, as a hierarchy, it's not as crucial in terms of contamination, but it could potentially do that. So, as you know, we have, this is within Zone 3, so, there's actually a couple, there's two ways that we have to think about Zone 3. In our bylaw, we adopted the drinking water protection resource areas as a zoning overlay district, so, it's actually attached to, if we had the map here, you'd see that the hash marks, it's actually a zoning overlay, which then regulations apply, which our bylaw says a gas station cannot go there with underground storage. You could do it with above ground, that it's contained as well. But there's also the way the state looks at it, which is the scientific approach, which our map was actually based off of, but DEP recognizes our Zone 3. The Dufrain Henry map was actually a state-sponsored map, so that's a statewide, it's for Norton, but they recognize it. So, I had a conversation with a person who, and you'll see an email from her, and that was the second attachment, the grouping of attachments. So they do look at Zone, or they acknowledge Zone 3, but the difference is, whereas they require municipalities to have, to mirror the same regulations they have for prohibitive uses for Zones 1 and 2, they leave Zone 3 up to the towns to decide. But in our case, we put in restrictions, Zone 3, we treat, as far as use restrictions, we treat equally as Zones 1 and 2. So, with that, what they're wanting to know is, would the board be willing to support a bylaw change that could allow underground storage tanks in Zone 3 if there's, you know, built-in safety mechanisms, like sensors and response or communications, so if there was a leak, that, you know, the operator would be notified, the town would be notified? Because they feel like, at this point, they, until they get some sort of changes to the bylaw, you know, they know right now, they can't move forward on it, and so, they wanted to see if the town would be interested. We should point out, this would be for the Fall Town Meeting, which is October 21st. If we were to do so, we would need to file with the town manager on August 27th. So, I'm actually, you know, and I mentioned this to Tom...
So, within a week?
It would just be, it would just be a general paragraph of, we would be seeking to change article such and such to do this. I want to just mention, I mentioned to the applicant, you know, I'm not here to advocate for them, the town, you know, as the planning director, I don't really have, you know, a direction one way or the other, and I'm really seeking your guidance, if you want to direct me to...
Is there a reason they didn't come tonight?
I would rather just have them explain that.
I didn't know if they'd given you...
Is the process that we would seek to change the bylaw, or would someone else draft the language that we would then support or adopt?
Well, I would, I guess my preference there would be to get the direction from the board, and then we could, I would certainly be working with Amy to, and then I would certainly need to bring in the water superintendent to make sure that it's done the way he thinks it should be. And then, of course, we would, then, before any item that goes before town meeting, any zoning changes, zoning bylaw changes, has to come back to the planning board.
I also noticed in reading the communication, it said that they were interested to understand if the planning board would consider a conditional approval.
Well, a while back, they were thinking, let's see, they would roll the dice, so to speak, and see, would you all consider supporting the amendment, and put in a condition that said that this would not, the decision would not go into effect until bylaw changes were occurring. And you can see from the letter he sent today, they don't want to go that route, they'd just rather hold off, continue to, well, if the board was okay going in this direction, that would send a signal to them to continue with completing the responses to the peer review, which is still out there, your comments that you had raised in the June 4th meeting. But for now, that's all been on hold pending, how do we go forward with the Zone 3 issue?
So when would we need to make a decision on that?
Um, well...
We'd have to have it in by the 27th?
Well, the town manager has said that articles need to be in by the 27th.
Just, sorry, Paul.
Sure.
But again, what would have to be submitted? It would have to be the intent of who is putting that language before the meeting? Is that the person that would have to submit it to the town manager?
Well, if the board were to say, to direct me to go ahead and do it, it would, I don't know if it would be, the applicant would be the planning board, or not, I don't know who, at this point, that would be. It's not them as an applicant, and I want to make that clear, because we're not, we don't want to make a change that is strictly for one project, whether it's this one or any other. I mean, and the language would need to be written in a way that other properties within Zone 3 could, you know, could take advantage of it, so it wouldn't be written strictly for 60 West Main Street.
So the language could be written by the applicant on behalf of someone else that is a town resident or landowner, is that correct?
I believe anyone would have that, could have that right.
That would be a petitioned article.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to have, typically, changes to the zoning bylaw are introduced by the planning board, sometimes by the zoning board, as the two boards that are most familiar with the zoning bylaw. A lot of times, you'll have building commissioners or building inspectors submit a list of changes they'd like to see, but if it is submitted by the planning board, then what you would need by the 27th would be a placeholder. So typically, any zoning amendment comes in as a placeholder, because you, once the planning board has their 48, Section 5, public hearing, typically, you'll make some changes to what's being presented, there'll be tweaks. So what actually is either on the warrant, or depending on when you're having your public hearing, what is actually presented at town meeting will be different than what was originally submitted. So if you want to have the applicant present a zoning amendment, then they have to submit 200 signatures, because it would be a special town meeting in October. So, it's up to the planning board how you want to do it. If the planning board wants to be the proponent of the article, you could be, or you could have someone else.
I let this go on, because I wanted the board to hear what Paul had told me on this. I mean, I'm speaking just for myself on this, if somebody's requesting this board to do something, I think they should be here. So, and the action that we have to take would be in six days, so, I personally am not comfortable pushing it forward, but if the board has other thoughts on it, and would like to, then...
I'm extremely skeptical about doing this again. We did it once, with a different project. We don't know, if we're not saying it's for a particular project, we don't know what other properties are affected, whether they've had problems like this before, or whether, what the intent of that is trying to prove, to accomplish. I don't know any of those things, and to do it within a week, I'm not saying the whole idea of this Zone 3 may be something we want to explore, but I certainly don't want to explore it around a particular applicant, and do it in a quick, haphazard way.
Yeah, I'm all for...
Serious concerns, and especially the way it's communicated through the different sessions and meetings, and what the public gets to understand in here, how it originated. So I have some serious concerns on that as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm all for doing things, you know, in a timely manner, but also, I don't like things getting rushed through, and this, to me, would seem like a rush. Again, that's my personal point of view.
I would, I think a lot of these comments, Paul, if I could just, on these maps of the, these maps outline the specific wellhead areas in Norton, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then, pardon my very crude analogy, but Zone 2 and Zone 3 would almost essentially be kind of like bullseye rings around the well, in most cases, depending on the topography and how anything else works.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, especially, I think before, I was comfortable looking at this kind of a change in any way, I'd want to see specifically what Zone 3 encompassed. Not saying, as Ryan said, not that I wouldn't be opposed to it, but, understanding those, what those specific areas are, and, I mean, if they're, if the applicant wants to be patient, then, as we look at it in due course, then I'm not opposed to looking at this particular project at a later point, if it's still viable.
I'll clarify my statement, too. I'm not particularly opposed to the changes, I just, I think, yeah, it's, we would need a lot more time and a lot more information.
So...
I don't, I think when you rush something like this through, things get skipped and overlooked unintentionally, and I don't want that to happen, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a question. If the applicant isn't here to agree to a continuance, what is kind of the next step for what we have?
Well, normally, since the applicant wasn't here, we would have just continued it, but I wanted...
Would they have agreed to a continuance?
I believe they did.
They, in their...
They requested a continuance.
Yeah, in their letter.
Yeah, they requested a continuance, but I, again, I wanted Paul to explain this, so at least we could start the conversation on what they were looking for, but, yeah, I would...
If it is the position of the board that we don't want to do something right away, given timing of what we have to do, is this something that they would have to, they should probably withdraw without prejudice, as opposed to sitting around waiting for something to happen, and thus continuing it? I don't want to have time periods run out and have any issues.
Yeah, because they're not here, we can't give them that option, so we would have to, we would have to continue it, and then, yeah.
Because then the next...
There's also, they're also, depending on if, so if, for example, the, if the bylaw changed, there could be an issue as to what they're then asking for, that they might have to withdraw and reapply anyway. We don't know, there's so many, there's unknowns, and that's the reason why I would advise that you cannot issue a permit, a conditional permit, that says yes, if this bylaw goes through, because then you haven't actually evaluated the project before you, in accordance with a bylaw, because the bylaw isn't in existence, so it's putting the cart before the horse. And then the other thing with Article 14, when this first came up a while ago, when we looked at this, you have an overlay, Article 14 is based on an overlay map that gives specific zones, Zone 1, 2, and 3, that are actually on a map. So, if DEP changes their Zones 1, 2, and 3, the bylaw doesn't change, because the map, the zoning map is there, the overlay map is there. So, in the future, something to consider would be to have Zone 1 just be a definition. Zone 1 is the definition under 310 CMR 19, or 22. And that way, you have a fluctuating zone, which is what, how DEP, they have fluctuating zones, so Zones 1, 2, and 3 will change. So, you know, that's something you'd have to work with, I would suggest you work with the water superintendent on, if that's something, if that's a route you want to go, but...
Well, water is such a sensitive topic in this town.
And there's a lot of wells, if you look at, if you look at these maps that were forwarded over to us, there's a whole bunch of wells, so it is, it is a very important topic, I would say, I would agree.
And, I hope adding to what Amy's saying, but as science changes, modeling changes, it might make sense down the road, looking at this more comprehensively, that we, you know, think about the zoning, these zones as a zoning overlay, or do we tie them directly to DEP's geography? But whatever, standards remain the same, but it's possible that changed conditions could result in boundaries changing, shrinking, expanding...
We want to make sure that if there were ever a new wellhead, that we would capture that, without having to make a zoning amendment.
Okay. All right.
That was my concern.
There's a new wellhead.
The scary part about that is making people aware of what the requirements are.
Yeah.
So giving it to somebody who's building a house, and say, go find that plan on somebody's else's website, good luck. I mean, I think, that's one of the reasons, I think, even though there is a downfall of having to change it, having it set out to somebody, they can look and see what they have to comply with, other than trying to find out. I think that's part of what the bylaw should be doing, is giving them notice, that they can understand, as opposed to having to get an engineer to, every time they want to make a change, and look where they were.
Right, and we would still, I agree, we would still need to keep it in the bylaw as a, however, you know, that, we would need to safeguard against, you know, for 1, 2, and 3. But what you're, one point you're making, that I agree with, too, is, one of, you know, stepping aside a little bit, but I think one of the needs that we need here in the town, we need a GIS analyst. We don't have a map, you know, professional mapper, that, DEP's constantly updating their maps, but, A, we don't have the software, and B, I've lost my GIS skills years ago. But if we were to have someone on staff who could work for all the departments that have mapping needs, we would have very up-to-date information readily available, more so than now. I mean, even this 1996 map only exists in hard copy, and then a very bad PDF that you have seen. We did put it, actually, I take that back, the zoning map, GIS analyst for SERPID, put that on the zoning map, so, it is available digitally, but it's, it could be, it should be easier to find.
Would you entertain motions, Steve, at this point?
Well, at first, I want to see if there's anyone in the audience that was here for this particular item. No? Okay.
Quick question, do we have in writing that they want a continuance, or like, what, where? I don't know, they're not here, where are we staying?
There was a, the email, this, the...
I know I saw it.
Email dated, that came from Tom, August 15th, did ask for it.
Yeah, I know I saw it, I just didn't know what email.
Move to the September timeframe, Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah. I saw that one in the...
Yeah. So, it, right, he's asking, we would need to be on the September hearing, but...
So for this point, if that's what they're asking for, that's probably what we'll need to do, but we'll need to get them to come back, and so have a conversation with you all on it. So, yes, I would entertain...
What is the, what are they asking for originally?
Say, plan and special permit.
Do we know when they filed? I see it's continued from June 4th, do we have a...
When they filed their application?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have it. They, we received it May 2nd.
Yeah.
That's our date stamp.
And they have already, they have, and we heard it, so we're okay. So if they filed it May 2nd, and you've already heard it, you heard it on June 4th, they're okay, so, so, there's no, with a special permit, there's no constructive approval until you close it, and do not issue a decision for 90 days.
Yeah.
As long as you opened it within 65 days, which you did.
As long as the public hearing remains open, before a vote is decided, can you continue without any...
For a special permit.
Okay.
Not for a variance, but you guys don't deal with variances, so you're lucky.
Grateful.
You are.
Now I'll entertain a motion.
So, I would, I guess I have one motion, then we'll have, somebody can do a second one, but I would say, I would move to table discussions about potential zoning amendments related to Zone 3, to a later meeting, afterward, date to be determined, after Paul and perhaps the water commissioner have been able to discuss the idea in a little bit more detail, and we can bring this back up, sometimes toward the end of this calendar year, if, and decide whether it's something that we want to move forward with, toward perhaps the April Town Meeting, next of 20. That's a long motion.
You have to table the discussion on the zoning change?
Yes.
On any, okay, on this potential zoning change?
Second.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Is no action, does that accomplish the same thing as Tim's motion?
Yeah.
Another question, do we need to table it?
Yeah, there's nothing before us.
It's not really before us.
Yeah, it's not really before us.
I would just, I would suggest no, I've got to finish with the motion, but I would suggest no action. If we wanted, you know, revisit it as a board, six months from now, for our own internal purposes, not for the purposes of a single applicant, then we can do that on our own, at any point.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
That's fine. I was...
Amy, was that work, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
You have nothing before you regarding the zoning amendment?
Logically thinking out loud.
Nothing's been filed, okay. Nothing's been filed, but the town clerk has a petitioned article, so...
Yeah. So I would withdraw my motion.
Entertaining other motions, though.
I see Mr. Sousa is on the agenda for potential changes of zoning map and zoning bylaws. Perhaps he's proposing a change to the wetlands protection overlay, but...
Hadn't heard that, but...
Well, I can always...
So I guess we're looking to continue this.
The bottom line is, it sounds like anybody has no interest in proposing or sponsoring an article to, you know, change the Zone 3 bylaw at this point in time. That's kind of what I'm gathering, if you want to have a motion that affects the, that's fine.
I don't know if we need a motion for that, I think we need a motion to continue the public hearing, the SP4.
Do they request a date?
It said to September, it didn't specify, but you have dates on the 10th and 17th, even though I have not yet put them on your calendar.
I might suggest the 10th, and if they decide that they would prefer to withdraw without prejudice at that time, then we could consider that, depending on how they feel about the project.
So I'll make a motion to continue 60 West Main Street to September 10.
Second.
A motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Special permit 46 is continued to September 10th. Special permit 46 is continued to September 10th.
Do we need to restate ground rules?
All right, yeah. So I guess the moment we've all been waiting for.
Mr. Chairman, before we kick this one off, I'll be recusing.
Thank you. All right. No, I'm going to start this off by saying there, there is no push to have a vote on this tonight for the board. Obviously, I like things done, you know, in a timely fashion, but if, if the board's not ready to vote, then I'm, I'm not going to push for it. I do think we need to discuss it. But I do want to make a couple of things clear. The last time that this particular issue was, was in front of the board, there was a lot of back and forth with, with the audience, with both the applicant and, and the abutters. The public hearing is closed, so we're not taking any comments, information from anyone in the audience on this. And as the last couple of meetings, I haven't had to remove anybody, but I will, you know, interruptions, I'll have you have to leave, so just please keep that in mind.
Mr. Chairman, is not a public comment on the merits, it's a procedural question?
Sure.
Is that acceptable?
Um, yeah, I will, yeah.
Do you want to take a mic?
Proceed briefly.
Sure, do you want to take a mic?
Sure.
I'll be, I'll be very brief. Just two quick procedural questions. First, there's a question I raised at the September, July 23rd hearing about whether or not Mr. O'Neill could participate that I'd asked to town council, and she said yes because it was a new public hearing with new publications, two abutters and everything. However, I went back and looked at the order of remand, and it does state in the order of remand that, in considering the remand petition, the board shall reconsider the evidence presented in the proceedings on the original petition that is the subject of this action. And it also says, after the close of the public hearing, the board shall consider all evidence, including but not limited to, the evidence presented as part of the proceedings of the original petition. And then finally, it also says, next one shall file an updated application. It doesn't say a new application. So I would just ask town council again, given those wordings, if she still believes that Mr. O'Neill can participate in the vote in the hearing on this.
My answer was that if it was necessary, then sure, he can participate, because what happens with municipal boards is that you have projects that come before you, and then you, you lose members. You have elections, you have, for appointed bodies, you have other people appointed. You cannot always guarantee the same members. So right now, if you have enough members, then you are all set. If you don't, I think by necessity, Mr. O'Neill can participate, and I think that even if he does not vote, he can still participate. He is a member of this planning board.
And there are enough numbers without him, there is still five, so. And then my only other procedural question or comment was just on an email that was sent to the director about possibly reopening the hearing. I know the response to that.
Yeah, we're not, we're not discussing that now, that's completely unacceptable to even bring that up.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I actually went over that when we first started this, so. Now, this is just for discussion for the board. We, again, like I said, I'm not going to force a vote on the board tonight by any means, so. Anybody want to kick it off?
I think from, I'll start, I guess. I think the revised application raise has, particularly in terms of scale, is a significant reduction from the original proposal, but at the same time, the inverter does fall in a less advantaged location from the perspective of the, the abutters on bay, which, your point is a challenging aspect of this. I think from my perspective, this still, I'm not going to go into every little detail, but I think at its core, I think this is at as of right use, and I don't think that, I don't think that what has been presented has risen to the level of such an intractable situation that we can't condition it appropriately. There are obviously a lot of those conditions that I would like to see in terms of everything from construction hours to landscaping, which I think those are probably two of the main ones that I'm focused on at this point. I think a lot of the issues that were brought up were relevant, and some of them, I think, kind of served as kind of a red herring, especially in terms of our batteries allowed under the SMART program. If they're not, then the state won't permit it under the SMART program, so it's not a rel, so it doesn't matter. Same thing with how the cranberries will be harvested, that's part of the SMART, that's governed by the SMART program, governed by the state. And if they lose the SMART program, then it becomes not allowable use, and it has to be decommissioned. So, I've heard a lot of comments. I'm interested to hear what other people have to, to say, but it's kind of where my mind is at this point in time.
Amy, is Tim's statement about not qualifying for the SMART program accurate? So if they were not to get any of these potential rebounded credits for this project, then they could not build it. Is that correct?
It's only allowed use in this location because it's in the SMART program.
Exactly. Just double checking that, that's how the zoning, you know, was written.
That is how the zoning bylaw is, yes. And, and I, I would agree with Tim. It is up to the state with regard to the SMART program.
Right, right, absolutely. I know that has no bearing on us.
Municipalities don't have any control.
Right, right. I just wanted confirmation on if that is, you know, I think that was my understanding, but just seeking confirmation that that is how the zoning bylaw is written, under which this application is applying under.
Under which this, yes, correct.
Yes, okay.
Under the SMART program.
Currently no, but under the, under the, under the zoning that's applicable to this application, should it not qualify for SMART, it cannot be built.
Correct.
Okay.
Under SMART, this counts the same as a grain silo on a farm. Without SMART, it's not.
Yep.
I definitely agree with your, a lot of what you said, Tim, and, and construction hours is something that, two of the biggest things in my mind that are, that are going to affect the abutters is the noise and the, and the site. I mean, those were two, we heard a lot of folks talking about that, and we can condition it so that the impact is minimal, if not none. So I think, I mean, that's where my head's at, as far as conditioning, what can we do to, to make sure that that happens, and, and as long as it's enforceable.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
I'm really concerned with the location of that inverter. And I, I'm also concerned that that really wasn't even brought to our attention. They filed with conservation under the old location, they brought us a different plan than they brought the conservation. Looking at this plan, where the inverter is now is less than 20 meters from the lot line of the abutter, and using the radius of two at 30 meters, there's a, it's a, it's a 55 decibels, and even using the acoustical panel that's supposed to, that's supposed to modify up to 30 decibels, it leaves an overage of 25 decibels, which is over the 10 decibels that Joe was concerned about and that the state law mandates in terms of noise. So it's there, and to put it there, I mean, that was the, the one thing we were focused on when we had this first hearing, was getting that inverter as far away from everybody as we could possibly get, and they turned around and they put it smack dab in the middle of, right next door, two in a, two in a abutter. And I just don't know how, one, we have the, you know, the, the regular decibels, then we have the, the kilohertz. We still haven't defined what that is. I mean, we heard testimony, and just so, I don't know that Kevin was here for it, there was somebody that came here that said, with the Clap Street, they had a child that goes in their backyard, that, that can't play in their backyard because of the, what's, these.
I think it was megahertz.
It's, it's, oh, it's kilohertz. But, but it's the mosquito noise, is what it's called. And it's literally, you, you can't, you can't hear it, but children can. And there was somebody that came to our hearing and said, their children, their child couldn't play in their backyard, they came in, they had to run into their house because they couldn't play in the backyard. And we've been trying to get some information about it. Paul has, and, and the applicant has. And to, to my knowledge, there's been no satisfactory explanation of what it is, how far it goes, and how far it travels. Our only protection from my perspective was getting that inverter as far away as possible. Now, I, I was looking, I was trying to, you know, we gave Adam the opportunity to come up with some other alternatives. I, he said he couldn't put it where it was initially for a reason. I, you know, and I'm not the expert, but he's left it to us to look at where else it could be, and from my perspective.
No, he's, he's said that he's not moving that inverter, so.
Well, but then, then he's saying, well, we can put that condition on it, that we have to move it, and whether we say a particular purpose of location, and I think I've identified a couple where it could be, I mean, literally, the bogs are on, on upland territory. If they want to, want to close down a portion of the bog and put it on it, they could do that. I mean, it's not impossible to do that, they could put it anywhere as close to it that they wanted to. I mean, we can put those conditions on it. We know that, that it has an impact on the people that's surrounding them, and that's a legitimate condition for us. Whether we say we want them to put it in a particular location, but maybe we can't say it, but maybe we say we want it to be 500 feet or 600 feet from any, any, any abutist property, and let them decide where it is, and that's the condition. And I think that's not unreasonable. If you look at this, you know, this, this map, just let, let them find a place to locate it. If they're saying it's a condition they can't meet, then it's a condition they can't meet. But I don't know that it's up to us to fold just because he says he can't do it, if it is in fact impacting the neighbors. It's going to impact their value, it's going to impact their site views, it's going to impact a whole bunch of things, and the major part of their concern was, you know, these, the inverter, and now also the battery equipment, and the threat of fire, the threat of noise, and, and all the things that, that really, we've been listening to for the last four Again, if there's a location, I know, I, just looking myself, I was trying to spot some, and if you take a look of that roadway as it, as it really almost directs itself to the, to the solar farm adjacent to us, there is property along that area, from what I could tell, that would be possible to put those inverters, and it's close to the array, but again, I, I don't want to put that as a requirement, I think that's difficult for us to do as a condition, to say it has to go in a particular place that we can't identify. But certainly, we can, we can put a distinction saying, that, that other inverter was how many feet away from everybody? Was a thousand feet away from everybody? Maybe it's not a thousand feet, maybe it's 900 feet, maybe it's something else, but let him, but put the onus on them to say, we want that away from people. You haven't satisfied the conditions as the sound, or the mosquito noise, and therefore we want you to, that's, that's a condition we have. The other condition that I was concerned with is we got a booklet like this on storm water management. We've had, heard from nobody on storm water management. I don't know about you, I was trying to read through that. Our conservation commission went through that process with peer review, and came up with findings and conditions. I, I agree that they have disputed some of those conditions, but the, the bulk of which I really have a problem with, I almost concur in that they fall within the jurisdictions of what we could do. And I would like to do, from my perspective, A, I'd like to see the inverter moved, and B, in some way, aside from all the other conditions that I think are out there, some way of, of adopting those things that are in the conservation commission's orders that are not objected to, or if we're objected to because they should fall upon us, and adopting them is part of what we're doing. They, they've made a claim that basically the, the, the conditions provided by our conservation commissions may be thrown out completely because they were not timely made. From my perspective, that's what I'm relying on, because I've heard from no peer review people or anybody else as to what storm review, storm management should be. I rely on our, on our town people to tell us that. And I'm, right now, their order is part of our record, and their, and their objections to their order is part of our record, and I see no reason why we can't adopt the portions of that record that would apply to something else that we haven't heard from anybody else on. There's a bunch of other things that I think, as we go through it, there's things that I think have been agreed upon, that we can easily implement and put in place as part of those conditions. But for me, those are the two conditions that I see as paramount to be able to make this thing go forward.
Let me follow up on a piece of what Orin said, but to kind of bear my soul here is, is I guess the longest-serving member of the planning board, and as an indirect consequence of that, I've sat through at least three constructed solar farms, and I feel a bit guilty for having let folks down. Start with Hill Street. There was absolutely no consideration of virtually anything when we approved Hill Street. If you go by Hill Street, stop, the inverter is right at the street, it hums like, I don't know what you'd want to describe it as, but I mean, it's, it's clearly audible, it's audible across the street where there are homes. So strike one for, for Joe Fernandez as a, as a planning board member for not having given that any consideration. Strike two came on Clap Street in terms of sound. Although the sound is not certainly discernible from the street, it's, it is discernible to some extent on abutting properties, and again, something I knew nothing about was different frequencies affecting different people, and I apologize to a family that has to keep their child indoors because she can hear those sounds. I'm not going to repeat that and strike out altogether. And following up on, on what Orin said, I don't know where the inverter ought to go, and my fear is that if we move it someplace else, there is the law of unintended consequences that, you know, it creates some other type of issue. And this may or may not be legal, and I'll allow Amy to tell me why it's not legal, but as far, as far as I'm concerned, as pertains to sound at any frequency, I don't want to hear sound on any abutting property at any decibel level above background, and that's a condition I'd want to make. But, you know, the law may be 10 decibels, but we're, we're permitting something, and I think we ought to, or may very well have the right to say that there'll be no discernible sound at any frequency above background. If, if they want to put in a building, if, if they want to do whatever they have to do, it can be blaringly loud as, as they want it to be on their property, but if the property line stops, do what you've got to do. But that ought to be, as far as I'm concerned, that ought to be a condition we place on it, so I don't care where they put the inverter. As long as the sound stops at the property line, end of discussion. So how we, how we craft that as a condition, and whether we're able to let them appeal that piece, but I'm not approving, I'm not voting to approve any project that has sound migrate off the site.
I, I completely understand what you're saying with that one. The, the problem I have with that and the trouble I have with that is, say they do put a building up and they put a window air conditioner on the side, you're going to hear that window air conditioner, and that's, that's at the property line, so that's why the, I believe, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's at the dwelling is where, or at the, at the building. I think it's unfeasible to require, to require nothing at the property line.
Well, I mean, again, the law says.
That's just me, and I've said that a few times already, but.
But, you know, there's, there's acreage that is not developed, are we going to, we're going to marginalize the value of that property because today there's no, no residents, so therefore, sound can migrate onto that property and marginalize the value. I, I don't see.
Or is property line?
I'm sorry?
Is property line or habitat, whichever is closer.
Well, in, in either case, to me, make all the noise you want, keep it at your property line.
I find that challenging, just from.
I mean, you put that stipulation on any, on any building, on any house being, coming up, I mean, we have to, we have to look at this the way we look at any other applicant coming in here, that's, in my personal opinion, that's, that's not feasible. I, I agree that we need to get it down to at least background, if not, I mean, as much as possible, but.
I'm okay with background, and you know what? If, on the Fourth of July, and the town's shooting off fireworks, and that's background noise, and they want to amp up the sound, that's fine, but it shouldn't be above background. People ought to be able to enjoy their backyards, or their, you know, their. People ought to be able to enjoy their backyards or their, you know, their living room, whatever it is, without listening to a, you know, a hum of, of some sort that may or may not be discernible to you or I, but is discernible to someone else. And again, people have a right to enjoy their property, whether it's the applicant in this case. I have no issues with, with a lot of what has been proposed, but don't devalue and don't interfere with the rights of others to use their property.
Just, just to that point, recall what we did recently with the Plain Street. As far as with the noise, we, we did place a condition that they were to conduct a background study, which I understand they'll be doing soon, but a background study, and then, prior to any final certificate, they would have to run it and then test to see if they've, what, you know, are they triggering any threshold that was set for that? And if it did, the condition said that they would have to further mitigate to bring, to bring the noise levels down. I suggest we have that template from Plain Street. We just keep that in mind for this as we go forward. We have some tools.
That allows for a 10-decibel level above background?
Uh, uh, it was 10% above background, I think was, or five. It wasn't 10 decibels, but it was like 5 or 10%, but it was, wouldn't, it wouldn't equate to 10 decibels. That was more restrictive, actually.
Well, then if, well, that in essence makes my point. If we can make it 5 or 10%, then we can make it 0%. And again, I, if that's being difficult, so be it, but I'm not going to apologize to another person in Norton because, you know, we allowed someone to impact their property. That would make that a motion, but we're too early in the process.
I don't think, even if we did something like that, I don't think we have a way to enforce it on an ongoing basis. The only noise statute we have is the state one, correct? Which is DEP will require, I actually pulled it up on my phone here, so I'll read it. If the, if the noise level of a sensitive receptor, if it's more than 10 decibels above ambient, mass DEP requires the noise source to mitigate its impact. So that's, that's, that's the only enforcement.
I mean, that's the law, and it's probably the most difficult law to enforce in Massachusetts. That notwithstanding, I'm not relying on the law in this case, I'm relying on our ability or perhaps inability. If we don't have the ability, let them appeal it. But again, a condition that I would impose on the project is that there'd be no discernible sound at any frequency above background at the property line. And again, if it's 1 decibel above background, you're in violation.
Amy, could we require that they cease operations until that's mitigated? As part of the condition of the permit?
So, if you guys, if you look at Section 15 in your zoning bylaw, Section 15.6, objectives to be met, you have natural environment, you have traffic, parking and pedestrian, pedestrian circulation, you have design, and then you have design, or that's design, and then you have landscaping. The only mention of noise is on page of my copy, it's page 17579. Use of existing woodlands or properly, properly vegetated and maintained landscaping should be used in buffer zones to reduce visual or noise impacts on abutting properties. That's the only reference to noise that I saw under site plan, under the objectives. So...
And there's nothing that calls out pollution of any kind?
Not under object, not under objectives. I know that, I know that we've already, in the first hearing, we went over the purpose, 15.1, is to preserve and protect natural environment, that it adequately provides its design. And again, it says, you know, minimizes to the maximum extent feasible any adverse off-site impacts to public facilities and services. And then, and, and then what was brought up in the last hearing was the last provision of purpose, which is, those developments in harmony with the existing neighborhood character and protects against adverse impacts to adjoining landowners. So that would be, I guess, the catch-all. However, that doesn't necessarily transfer over into 15.6, which gives us a very detailed, very detailed list of objectives to be met. There, you know, it's four pages of objectives. So I, I guess that, you know, if, if a condition such as that were challenged, you know, we'd have to show where, where, where that objective is in site plan review.
Whoa.
I mean, we do have, you know, under the, under the section for approval, it does say, you know, that you can condition a project to mitigate adverse impacts to the neighborhood in abutters, including but not limited to adverse impacts caused by noise, dust, fumes, odors, lighting, headlight glare, hours of operation. I think that, so that, this is a very, very long way of, of answering your question, Orrin. I do think that if you, if there were a condition that consisted of mitigation to, for adverse impacts due to noise, if that condition were not complied with, then I think that you could say you have to shut down until it's complied with. So the answer to your question is yes, I think you could do that, provided that your condition is something that you can impose.
And also, Amy, under site plan approval, that we've used, under purpose, the very last thing in that the proposed development is in harmony with existing neighborhood character, which, and protects against adverse impacts to adjoining landowners, I think...
Correct. That was what was brought up at the last hearing, that was the point.
But we, at least I focused on in harmony with the neighborhood, but now focusing on adverse impacts to abutting properties, again, for me, it's about the sound.
All right, I guess it's my turn. So I think what I'm struggling with, and I think I'm, I'm signing with Orrin and Joe a lot, is that, you know, I've taken to heart the documents that Adam provided and have read them, reread them, and there are some things in here that talk about EMF and, you know, no guideline being set, and that there are potential health effects. And a lot of these, especially the one on acoustic and EMF levels, although the reduced project is more in line with these, it's still larger than. And I think I'm still very hung up on that. It's very hard for me to not have a similar project to look at when determining a lot of these factors. And maybe that's kind of my, you know, scientific side. This being the first of its kind is really hard for me, because I'm really trying to look at things that are similar. So looking at what has been provided, I'm still not finding that, I hate to use this term, but like one-for-one match. Like, these in the example, you know, aren't 10 feet, they're not potentially tracking, the systems aren't necessarily an exact match in my mind. So I'm having a really hard time correlating the two together. And, and I'm really, really, really still very troubled about the fact that there's no property valuation outside of like Indiana that can prove to me that there won't be an adverse effect on the, on, on people's home value. So I think if this were to go forward, I would definitely want to see extensive conditions around EMF and acoustic, especially kind of reading through these documents and not really finding that I feel like it's, it's a, a match. I, I am concerned about the height. Someone who works in the construction industry, I am concerned about what's going to happen if those piers have to be piled, drived in. You know, the, being on the uplands is an improvement. I, I'm happy to see the reduction, but when we look at what's been approved and what's been approved in other places, it's still quite large.
Obviously, I was only on the planning board during the Supreme End discussion, public hearing, so I've, I've, based on the hearings that we've had, you know, in this phase of it, and all the material and all of the research and such, and listening to all of the residents in town, which by the way, I don't recall a single resident in favor of the project, which is intriguing to me, but I've made up my mind, I don't want to share it with anybody else, I don't want to sway anybody's vote, because obviously the five of you, you know, carry more weight, in my opinion, because you were part of the original request. But I'm still one vote.
I'm not sure, given, there's a lot of things to look at here, but I think just given how our discussions have been so far, I think that we need to, regardless of what path we're talking about, we need to just kind of evaluate where we stand in terms of what noise language we would, what's the structure of whatever noise condition we might impose on any kind of approval might be. Because until we get through that one, we're not going anywhere.
Just wanted to note, I'm sorry, just so you know, the current position of the inverter and the equipment is within the floodplain zone. Where everybody else is in the highland, if you take a look at the picture they showed, it cuts across the floodplain zone. So part of that equipment and the inverter is actually in the floodplain zone. It's not upland. I don't know how that bears to everything else, but...
Yeah, having been on the site and, and I saw where it was all going to go, the equipment, and this is where, Joe, I, I have concerns with yours, your point at the property line. I don't know, there's that, that berm, that's, we talked about it being like a 20-foot berm. I don't recall, and I'll have to look back at my notes, whether Mr. Cugliano's land was on this side of that berm, on the bog side or the other side? Does that make sense?
I believe...
Because then, because then obviously, that berm would muffle a lot of the noise, and that would be the property line. So that's why I'd be worried about that wording.
I believe I understood that the berm was on the abutting property. I could be misremembering.
Yeah.
So we can try and check.
What did you say, Orrin? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
We're looking, looking to see where the berm was, the change in topo, but I see what you're saying right there.
Yeah, I mean, strictly for the, the wording that Joe has mentioned, I mean, that would be, that would be a big part of it, muffling the noise, at least going that direction.
Again, not to beat that same horse, and, you know, I'm not an acoustical, acoustical engineer, and I certainly don't want to take responsibility for designing a sound mitigation system. And that's why I would leave it to the applicant to, if it's approved, with this type of a condition, to figure out whatever it's going to take to mitigate sound and contain sound on their property.
I think we have...
You understand what my, my point was, correct?
I, I understand your point, but again, I'm trying to make a lot of these points moot and put the, the onus on the applicant. I mean, I don't care where the berm is, I don't care what they use for baffling, all I care about is, at any given point in time, if I go onto someone else's abutting property and I can hear hum, they're in violation, under what I would propose as a condition.
What I'm saying is that the property line is at, if the property line is on the bog side of that berm, I mean, there's, it'd be standing right here. This is his property going this way. So you're going to hear it standing right there, but not... That's the main point. I'm not saying yes or no either way, I'm just saying that...
The berm's on the abutting's land.
That's what I was asking.
That's what, that, he testified that the berm was on his land, and he didn't know that it was natural. He said he didn't think it was natural, it was collection of trees. And he said he wanted to develop that land for 17, he could develop up to 17 houses there. So the fact that he has a berm there now, and it's, it's not natural...
Have you seen it? Did you go out and...
He just testified to that, okay? I didn't see it.
Yeah, he said he was to develop his land, I didn't hear him say the berm, because that's a, that's a steep drop.
Yeah, it's like a giant pile, it's like a mountain, it looks like...
Some trees?
It's, it's, it's pretty heavily covered with trees and vegetation.
It looked like dirt to me.
Steve had asked if it could be planted, and the applicant responded that it could be planted, but they did not want to have to plant it with large trees because it was so high up anyway.
Okay, but that doesn't...
That was what I remember about trees, and that's what I have in my notes about the berm.
But it was on his land, and whether he plants it or does anything with it, it's not protected, it's not in...
I'm not fighting for or against it, I'm just saying that, that's, if that's the property line, then that's going to muffle a lot of the sound. I mean, to me, that looked like it wasn't going to be developed, but...
I guess, Joe, to your point about the evaluation, everything like that, one of, part of what we had in our packet last week was talking about the acoustic study, and that there would be a study of the existing background noise to determine a baseline. And then, it'd be a post-construction study with a peer reviewer who is an acoustical engineer and way smarter than any of us. In this language, it's the noise threshold with the 10 decibels above ambient background noise at the residence per DEP. Ignoring that numerical point, it then talks about, should this be exceeded the applicant required to mitigate, including, you know, two blah blah blah, noise barriers, acoustic shields, which is also subject to peer review. So that structure is what you're looking for.
Just so you know...
You would prefer that 10 be zero.
Right, because...
And have it be at the property line, not at the residence. That's essentially what you're looking for is...
Yeah, just, Tim, if you notice, in the thirds, in the second sentence, the study must examine the levels by the project at the property line and the nearest habitable residence.
Right.
Then it goes on to say the 10 is, noise at the residence, that's not what the, that's not what the law requires. The law requires the property line.
Um, not sure it does.
I thought it was the nearest structure.
So, DEP's noise criteria I have in front of me here. So DEP's noise criteria, in responding to complaints, DEP measures noise levels at the complainant's location and other nearby locations that may be affected. Noise level at a sensitive receptors' location, so if it's some fancy engineering thing that is quiet, is more than 10 decibels above ambient, DEP requires the noise source mitigates impact. So it does talk about specifically residences, buildings.
710.1 states, the policy specifies that the ambient sound level measured at the property line of the property or at the nearest inhabited buildings shall not be increased by more than 10 decibels, weighted at the A scale, due to the sound from the facility during its operating hours.
Which number are you looking at?
710.1, 310 CMR.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm reading their interpretation of their own, of that regulation, so I'm not reading the actual, how they read it. Yeah. Yeah. It's... Yeah, it says "or," which makes it very ambiguous, given how separated the property lines and receptors can be.
Or the nearest inhabited buildings.
Right. But the fact that it says "or" and doesn't, makes it challenging to interpret, I feel like. It's kind of like saying here or here. And who, and how that's determined makes it, kind of, which one, which one the DEP chooses to measure from becomes...
I don't read it that way. You can have inhabited buildings...
That's how I interpret, I interpret the "or" as the "and," I interpret as an "or." You know what I mean?
No, because you can have inhabited buildings that's closer than the nearest property line. So, if I rent a building...
Okay, so if it's, so it's within the same property, you're saying?
Right.
So, in your view, the property line should be, would be the further, the property line should be the furthest that you need to evaluate?
Right.
Okay.
Is there a definition section in that, Warren?
Now that I, now that I understand how you're...
I know what you're saying, though.
I understand, now that I understand how you're reading that, that does, yeah, it opens up a level of, now I'm questioning...
I'm looking at, I forget who gave it to us, but it's footnoted in terms of sound, and it does talk about...
The mass.gov?
Yeah.
That's what I have up on my phone.
Noise interpretation there.
That's what I have open here.
Okay, it says...
Yeah.
Residents or buildings?
Yeah. But in terms of the letter of the actual regulation, there's, the interpretation is very clear that it's talking about the buildings. The actual regulation is less so, which doesn't make our job any easier.
It does if you follow my logic.
Yeah, everybody be quiet. But yeah, my concern, Norton doesn't have a sound code, but it does say that, let's see, "Individual towns and cities implement their own noise ordinances in addition to state laws." So, even though it wouldn't be a Norton code, it would be, yeah, I mean, a condition. We can condition it like that, I think.
That's enforcing what I call... Yeah.
Oh, this one says both property line and the nearest inhabited residence.
Yeah.
That's his "and"?
Yeah.
Cementex will be the end of us.
Really? I think we all are on the same page where we want to minimize it, at the very least.
Yeah.
Or eliminate it. To bring back what Paul had mentioned from the last project, that, I mean, the back, I liked the background study beforehand, and, and again, when running the equipment, I mean, that's, that's got to be essential for anything, because you can take another study anytime if you're running the equipment the way it's supposed to be run before it's finally approved.
Yeah, during commissioning.
Yeah. And I think even, you know, did we add retesting?
I don't, I don't remember if we did that.
Well, it's implied, because if it triggers it, then additional mitigation would kick in, so you would have to...
Even, you know, say it, say it passes and there's zero at the property line, and then a year from now, it's louder.
Yeah, maintenance.
There's a requirement in number two here, that there's an operation, a maintenance plan. Recognized inbursts can come louder if not properly maintained. The applicant must follow the O and M plan. So, that is...
Right.
It is addressed. If it is addressed sufficiently, is something that we can discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be, I'd be okay with the condition, you know, retesting a year later, or, you know, and then five years later, if nothing, something like that.
In absence of a complaint?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a good way to put it.
One question for Amy is, once, if the land were to change ownership, does, do all of the conditions carry over to the new owner?
As far as the landscaping, I had mentioned before, I don't know if it was in the final, you have it in front of you, about mitigating the length of time it takes the trees to grow to have some kind of berm. Then I think there was talk about changing the species of tree to make sure it survives on it, but just to...
I think the discussion was not to specifically name the species of trees to allow the landscape architect to select what will grow best.
Yeah, but to say have a six-foot berm plus whatever tree to get it to that, you know, 10, 15 feet, whatever we want to do.
There are bond for landscaping, I think we require that. Are you saying landscaping on top of the berm, is it, is that just on the one area or...
I think it was all the areas they had the, I know it was definitely around the inverters, I think. Did we talk about that? Yeah. And then there was two other areas, maybe? Wherever it was feasible. I know that, I know for a fact that there was one or two where they couldn't...
In the middle of the bog, I think.
Right, with the access road.
Well, we just say, leave it the way it is, except if the land does not support the tree that's designated, then they have the right to put it in appropriate replacement, as opposed to giving them the right to plant anything they want. So, they've specified what they're planting. My understanding was, in some cases, that planting may not do well because of the nature of the soil it's being planted in. And in those cases, they could substitute something else that's more appropriate.
I think that's appropriate, yeah, because it gives them flexibility if needed, but doesn't let them plant a whole bunch of whatevers. Not that they would do that, but speaking from a cynical point of view.
And you do have the authority to get a bond for landscaping?
Yeah.
So, I would recommend we do that, considering...
Yeah.
The amount.
Yeah. Bond for landscaping, especially because we had so many issues with Clap Street with that.
Do we have any clue as to what that cost would be, what kind of bond required?
How did, oh, you weren't there for that. Joe, on Clap Street, how did, how did they determine the bond for that? Do you remember?
And don't hold me to this, I think the applicant came up with an estimate of what it was going to cost to do the plantings, and that's what it responded. But I, I can't say that with authority.
We didn't assign a dollar amount for Plain Street. It was just left that they would come back with the, with the estimate. And I believe it was written that it comes back here. I believe you all added that.
Yeah. Do we have any more thoughts for tonight?
Do we want to talk about the, whether we feel a special permit is warranted for the floodplain? Since that's a part of this that we haven't addressed. I know, Warren, you've, your feeling is that the inverter is in the floodplain, so that we should be requiring a special permit for that.
Well, the problem I have is, is the Conservation Commission reviewed this at a different location. They didn't review it with this being in the floodplain.
And they would have to, well, DEP will and/or Conservation will.
Well, that, DEP and Conservation only have that old plan in front of them.
But they'll have to...
So, I'm not sure what would happen. If we would approve the plan now, do they have to resubmit to Conservation?
If it's different from what they already submitted, they would have to resubmit to Conservation, yeah.
So, Warren, this is something that, this is something that we need to look into. I am, I'm looking at, right now, I'm looking at their, their request for superseding order that I had given you a copy of. In the beginning of their request, they state that the, that the plan listed on the order of conditions is the wrong plan, but there's not, that's all they say. So, so I have to talk with Jennifer about this, about what exactly was submitted and what they're claiming is the final plan, because part of their request for superseding order of conditions is the fact that the, that the commission didn't open the hearing within 21 days, which there's an argument that can be made, that if they don't open it within 21 days, the commission then loses jurisdiction, it goes straight to DEP for DEP to make a determination. And if that's the case, then DEP would make a determination based on the information that was before the Conservation Commission. So, we need to know what was before Conservation Commission.
Any idea of the timing, the DEP response to their...
Uh, DEP has, it's my understanding that DEP has set a, a site visit and, um... Apologize, I wasn't aware that we do get into this. I think it was a site visit set for early September, and the commission, the agent has asked that that be moved because she's not available, and I haven't heard anything since. So, I would appreciate some time to look into this. It doesn't look like a decision's going to be made tonight.
Yeah, I don't think that we're ready for a vote, I mean...
So, it will, I can, I do, I can look into that, and I do want to, because I'm confused.
To, from my perspective on that point, if it's in the floodplain, I think it would be, in our business to review it for a special permit related to the floodplain. But I think, speaking to what Amy said previously, the town council's position is that Article 10 does not apply in that case, so we have to just review it based on those two conditions and Article 13.
Those conditions are...
Article 13 is, yes, Article 13 is floodplain.
So, I mean...
Can I ask a question on that? I'm confused as to why you would limit Article 10 as it goes to specifying all the other requirements for a special permit. The timing, the notice, why would we extricate that provision as it relates to how it applies when we're looking to that provision to define how we handle all the rest of the permit process? As it says, the timing and what we have to do, how quickly we have to respond, who we have to deliver to, this is all in 10, but it's for a special permit. And so, why we would just take that other provision, say it only, it doesn't apply to everything else when we're looking at it? I'm not clear on that, as to why we'd eliminate that one provision from the rest of Article 10.
I apologize, I'm not, I'm not following.
Why the rest of Article 10 doesn't apply when part of it does, is that...
Yeah, right. Article 10 defines how you go about the process of filing for a special permit, the timing, what's in it, all of which has to apply to this as well. The only thing, and so I'm curious as to why we took one provision out of that Article 10 and saying that doesn't apply and only applies to the use restrictions. It doesn't apply to everything else.
Because Article, because Article 13 has its own special provisions under special permit uses.
But it's not, it's not conclusive. It says you may, but you have to find these things. It didn't say you have to find, you have to grant it if these are followed. It says, one of the things, it says "may."
So, so the difference between a special permit and site plan is that a special permit is discretionary. Site plan is not discretionary.
Right.
So, when a special permit says, says "may," you have the discretion.
Right.
Under, under, my, my point, under site plan, there, there's not, so, but under special permit, whether it be under 10 or 13, you have the discretion.
Okay.
So, I mean, so from my perspective, we have to look at that aspect of it under Article 13 for, we talked about peer review up and down for the sound studies and not being a sound engineer. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm going to trust the lawyer.
Yeah.
That's why Amy's here.
So, I mean, I would, in terms of procedurally, I would, I would feel that we would be giving the applicant the appropriate relief if we were looking at the special permit for the floodplain, rather than not determining that and having to, have it come back at some point later down the road if it was needed. That's my feeling on that.
The, it, the remand, it appears the remand, they, they did ask for site plan and special permit. It's, that's what it says right here in the, it says here in the, in the agenda description. I, I mean, we can check, but...
I know, I know, we talked about it in terms of evaluating whether that was needed. So, I wanted to say what I, I think it is needed, but I also think that, based on your guidance, that we have to look at it strictly on Article 13. That's one.
So, it sounds like the applicant agrees that the special permit is needed if, if that was part of the request. Is that a true statement?
That is, that's what the agenda says. I have to check the application.
I remember arguments about that or statements about whether or not the special permit was required.
Right.
If the applicant specifically requested it, then obviously, they're conceding to that need.
It was my recommendation to the applicant, and they don't have to listen to me, obviously. No one does, but the, my recommendation was that they apply for the special permit. And so, I...
Here's the remand order. Looks like they have an option, or we have an option to accept it.
Yeah, so this, yeah, the remand order is up to, if they apply for, if they apply for a special permit, the board will determine whether the revised project needs and meets the standards for floodplain overlays district on a special permit.
So, we are determining whether it needs it and then whether it needs it?
No, if they had, no, if they, if they requested it, they requested it.
Okay.
And let, let me just confirm it, but I'm certain they've submitted the special permit application.
So, I, we do have to check the application to see what, what exactly they applied for, but they did submit in writing an argument that they do not, they are not subject...
They, they did apply.
To a special permit.
But they did apply for the special permit for the floodplain district.
And then on July 16th, they submitted, they submitted a document from, from their attorneys saying that Nexon project does not require any special permits, and then they're saying that because of the ad void citing in the, in, excuse me, in Article 22. And then their, their next, their next argument is that... And then their, their next, um, their next argument is that, um, because, because Article 22 was enacted after, or amended after floodplain and water resource protection district were in effect, that the legislative body of the town did not need for special permits to be required. Which would, which would be county meeting, the legislative body of the town.
Well, they, they did raise an issue as to what this board did. And being one of the people that made that amendment modification, I can tell you what my intent was to limit it to as of right, referencing the right schedule, what is permitted under our schedule of uses.
Meaning, meaning the SMART program.
No, meaning whatever it was, it was, that language was out, didn't say, uh, right of use. It said just, you, you, without, without limitation, it said no permit was required. I added right of use, because I wanted it to apply to the schedule of uses. So it would be permitted under those uses, but wouldn't foreclose all of the other overlay districts.
Particularly because they are overlay districts. So, um, I think that your reasoning makes sense. But then they also do go on in this July 16th, um, letter to state that if Article 13 is applicable, then they do, they would qualify for a special permit.
I believe it also said they, they felt that they would meet the criteria.
Yes. Yeah, they do say that in here. Um, so I, I think the first, um, I think the first point is to, um, find out for sure, uh, that the inverter is within the floodplain. And then we can go from, from Conservation, find out what they, what they looked at.
In, in any respect, there's.
That's their plan.
In any respect, there's nothing harmful is the wrong word, but there's nothing negative about us granting them a special permit for relief that they don't necessarily need, correct?
They applied for it, so, correct. I, I would, I would agree with you, if they applied for it.
Unless it doesn't pass, you need a super majority for it to pass.
Correct.
Correct.
So you need five people with that.
Correct. But, I mean, I mean, I think, I think, I thought they met the guidelines under Section 13 the first time. So I think they meet them the second time as well, in terms of what Article 13 lays out for us to evaluate. So, that's my, speaking for myself. That doesn't talk about anything else that we've talked about, in terms of noise, in terms of construction, in terms of EMF, all the other stuff. But in terms of Section 13, I think if we look at what's in Section 13, it's pretty straightforward.
Speaking for myself, I would have said, if I could go with the Conservation Commission and have their finding apply, I'm comfortable that they've evaluated, they have peer reviewed it, and their conclusions were something I would be able to be comfortable with. Uh, in absence of that, I'm looking at that thick of a binder, and I have no clue what it says, which makes me uncomfortable. So that's why I'm deferring back to them, with the one caveat, is they reviewed it with the, um, inverter at a different location. So that's why it's kind of a little bit of a confusing thing for me. But that's why I keep on going back to, listen, there, there are things in there that were wrong, misstated. I don't mind going through all of that and saying, those, those corrections are relevant. There's some things that really are in Conservation that doesn't apply to us. But certainly Conservation stepped over the line, I think, put in conditions that we could put in, that we should put in. So that's why I really would, if, in absence of anything else, if we were gonna review for a special permit, I'm not saying just to deny it because it's there. I'm just saying, I, I'm not comfortable making that determination in absence of peer review or in absence of reliance on the Conservation Commission's findings and conclusions, myself. One of the things I think you can check with, with, um, Jennifer is what plans they would, they did review.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And it sounds like step one.
Yeah.
It's interesting, too, because it appears, it appears that they could, they could flip it and keep it out. I mean, even with the sharp topography, they could take that and they could move it to be like here, here, and here. They would stay out of this group.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what's, so we have to see, we have to see what they saw.
Okay. It was part of a bigger plan. I think there, there's a reference to.
I'm just gonna take picture. Amy, it's on, it's on this one, this plan.
Yeah, and I can't see it. That's why.
I just blew it up.
That's why Orin blows it up.
Yeah, this is so helpful. Oh, yeah, and we have this in the drop box, so I can blow it there.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, but.
And I'll, I'll go over this with Jennifer.
Just to close the points, 13, the uses says, no peruse issued, fellow excavator in the floodway to build new structures, specifically improve an existing structure in the floodway. And shall not increase the wire surface elevation at the 100-year flood more than zero at any point. Certified by professional engineer.
And that's, they provided that in this under that tab. There's floodplain certification, it looks like.
Yeah.
Is that an updated one? Or what? That was the?
That's the.
July 1, it says.
Right, that, that came with the remand application. So it was updated for this
So.
new project.
I think it says it in any, it says. Yeah, it says. At any point. Hundred feet more than zero inches at any point. I'm not sure that that is not, again.
Okay.
Any other, so we've talked about floodplain, we've talked about noise, we've talked about EMF.
Can we talk about, well, just some of the other things that, the fire department laid out a bunch of things. I, I think that was very helpful. Rather than leave it to one bullet point, I'm not real comfortable, I'd like to be a little bit more specific in some of the things they're asking for, because I don't want them trying to argue with the building inspector whether I need this, I don't need this, and appealing it. If it's in our order, then it's clear they have to provide some of those things. So I would like to be a little bit more specific than just a general comment and incorporate the things that he's asked for to make sure that they get it.
The bullets.
Yeah.
You don't wanna say, you meet all the fire department's requirements. You wanna lay them out more specific.
Right.
Yeah, they may have others, but, but certainly I wanna make sure that they can, because some of those are cost things and they, you know, if they're gonna put, have to put in a hydrant offsite, I wanna make sure that it's specified that they've got, if that's required, they're gonna have to put it in. Same thing with the.
He wrote it in a way that we can just.
Yeah, I think so.
Copy and paste it.
I, I think he was trying to be helpful of a general statement, but I'd rather, I'd rather be more, more specific. Some of the things maybe not, but the things that certainly can be contentious in terms of what has to be done.
Right.
I wanna make sure he, they have the power to do that.
I think his, his list of items was very helpful.
Yeah.
We have the decommissioned number that we're gonna be using without salvage values. They've, they've agreed that they were not taking salvage value, so they have those numbers.
They gave us both numbers, but we would use the higher one.
They agreed not to use salvage values. There was also issues with water monitoring, monitoring and testing, as well as noise.
Yeah, the water monitoring was interesting, because they talked about zinc, which would come from the galvanized steel piles.
There's also lead in those steel piles, by the way. So that was the other question raised by the neighbors. And in fact, the plan that they attached talks about, that's what they attached, this thing that.
Yeah.
It's that form. They didn't attach the pile-driven one to their plans. They only attached this one, the screw one, to their plans. And that references lead as well.
I'm not sure if that's, that's, that may refer to a lead section, not a lead section. Like the leading edge of something. I think that would be, that would be how I would interpret that component name. Because it is talking about a hot-dip galvanized coating. It's not talking about a lead coating. So that would be how I would read that part, having written.
They were questioning, asking to comply with the 12 elements. And I think some of the neighbors referencing lead, and I don't know, that would be onerous to ask for zinc and lead and something else that might be problematic.
Yeah, I mean, the, the testing for zinc is one thing, and adding lead, lead is certainly a definite contaminant that would be a problem. I think, from a water quality perspective, it's less a consideration on the piles themselves as to what the underwater topography might be like. And as they go down, if they could pop a bubble of something, or I don't know what, affecting kind of the water. That's, that's the part of the water aspect that I am most unsure about.
Right. Without geotech.
But there's no way to know.
There's no way to know, one, what's, what's gonna be the best method to use, two, where the water table actually is. I mean, they're using historic data, which everybody does, and that's always the first pass. I understand that. But the lack of having any specific geotech for that area is, is gonna.
Conservation had requested a geotech, a geotech survey in advance of them doing any work.
Yeah.
They objected to that. But that's something they do.
They obje, no, they said they would, they would supply it. They objected to the Conservation Commission approving it.
Approving. Well, I guess that raises the question, if it's gonna be problematic, does someone have the right to say you can't do it? If it's gonna crack, uh, something and hurt some element of our water system. And again.
There, there is a question of, okay, it's gonna do a bad thing, but if it's not being submitted, if it's not, what is the review mechanism for that?
I think it would be a stamped plan. Um, I think that would come down to, that would be on the engineer.
Yeah, but I guess the question comes in.
They can't submit a plan that will cause.
If there's a problem, what happens? When they say review, are they reviewing it for an issue before they can go forward? So if they, if, if that reflects an issue, that if you go below a certain depth, something's gonna happen that's not good?
So then, I, I guess my position, what I'm trying to say is that, um, if it's a stamped plan, that engineer has to stamp that it's safe.
Right. Their PE license is on the line if it's not.
So you're not asking them just to take the survey and tell us what's there. You're saying what's there is safe. It's different. They're gonna do a survey that's gonna tell you the geo, the, the standard, what's there, and give it to you. But you're saying he's gonna say what's there and he says it's safe for them to do what they're doing, which is different.
Yes, what they're, what they're, what they're proposing, the engineer has to stamp that what they're proposing, based on what's in the ground, what's there.
Findings of the geotech report.
Is safe. He has to say that. He can't, it can't be the, it can't be unsafe. There, there's a license.
Okay.
So they'll take the geotech report and engineer to that one.
Exactly.
And then stamp the plans to that. So Amy's point is that a professional engineer is gonna stamp the plan saying that he looked at the geotech, or he or she looked at the geotech, looked at all the surrounding data. They have proposed will not basically fail.
Or he, they can only go so many feet down.
Right, exactly. Yes.
And then that, that will then, in some way, be incorporated into our, our, our conditions, that they satisfy the conditions required by that survey. I'm trying to find out, if they find out, they're planning to go 14 feet, they can only go 10. We need something.
Where's the stop sign, basically?
Yeah, yeah. How do, how do we put the stop sign in? Whether it's, they have to get a survey that's gonna say, uh, it's fine, at the, whatever they're proposing, or it's gonna say, you can't go beyond that, and then our condition is you can't go beyond those conditions.
How do we put that as a condition, though? Yeah.
That geotech survey would be, what part of the process would that be, and who would that, and what would be the process for that engineer being hired?
Would be very early on. I mean, most, most construction jobs, you're gonna do survey and geotech right away. One, you don't wanna end up having something that's not on the property that you're leasing or owning.
Oh, yeah.
And you wanna test the soil conditions, water table, existing utilities, things like that. So, you know, in my line of work, it's, it's, you know, within the first few months, you're gonna get out there and do your due diligence, because if you don't do the site investigation work, you really can't push the plans forward.
That's hired by the applicant?
Mm-hmm.
Just as part of their construction?
Yeah, I'm gonna assume Beals and Thomas might have a geotech firm in-house, or one they routinely work with, that they'll sub to, to do the work if they don't have that service in-house as part of their own firm. I'm not sure about that.
So how do we condition that?
Could we condition?
Because if it's gonna be part of the, the final engineering.
Not that Beals and Thomas isn't a good firm, but is there, is it weird to say that we'd want a peer review of that?
Well, I think that's pretty much what they're objecting with the CONCOMs, that they would want to peer review it or approve it.
I'm not saying.
Was it something we even have to condition, or is that just a?
I'm saying we, I'm saying somebody who actually knows what they're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, do, do we have the authority to condition something with that? If that's gonna be part of this the engineering plan before anything is done?
Is in an ACRA area. It is. And once we have, once we're, we have some discretion in allowing a special permit, I think conditions that will impact the community or the, I, I just think we have the right to.
Well, what condition would that be? I mean, the, they're not gonna do any work without that final engineering study, which is signed off by the engineer, so that's already incorporated in it. So when I say what authority do we have, I mean, what, what can we do to ensure that that's gonna happen when it has to happen anyways? So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get around to, back to the point of, you know, what condition.
There's only a corner of the building within, of the inverter.
I don't know that that's the only place. I mean, there's, that's, again, the Conservation reviewed it. I'm not sure what else they found. I know they said there's some work areas within a riverfront area, and there's a bunch of things in their, in their findings that said there was work being proposed in certain areas that were, um, a border, bordering wetlands, they're doing work within those areas. So, um, I'm not, that, that's why I'm a little.
I'm not sure that makes it a floodplain automatically.
Even outside of floodplain, the idea of water quality is certainly an important one.
Yeah.
So whether that.
Well, there's already a condition that they have to do that testing, and then what, what further condition do we have to put on it? Or can we?
Well, they have to, they have to test.
The idea of the.
Yeah.
If, as long as the testing, um, the work they're proposing, um, the testing reflects that the work they're proposing is satisf, satisfies the results, that's fine. If it doesn't, if the results of the testing, if the work they're doing goes beyond what the, the is recommended, then they have to come back or do something else. They can't do it, or they have to come back for a modification. And then we can evaluate what they're doing and why they're doing it and what has to be done. If it's minor, we could just approve it without hearing. If it's major, then they're doing it all over the place. If it's one hole that they gotta dig, and it's one issue and they can do something to fix it, that's one thing. If it's a major thing, then we could have it, have to.
So the floodplain is defined as, it's defined through the firm maps, so it's not, it's not defined as resource areas. So, right now, it looks like from their plan, that there's a corner of the inverter that's within the floodplain. So with regard to jurisdiction under the floodplain, under Article 13, it would be that.
And since they can't move the inverter, it's definitely in the floodplain.
Well, and again, I'm not sure there's, there's nothing else that, that applies.
So they can't.
I think they could flip it, and then it wouldn't be.
Trying to, trying to track the floodplain lines was kinda difficult. I just noticed it on this. But I don't know if there's any other work being proposed in any other areas.
It doesn't look like it, because it looks like the floodplain goes like this. So it looks like they've kept everything south.
But it runs, it runs along.
Yeah, south, everything's south of it, it looks like.
The, there's, there's the creek, and there's a riverfront area, 200 feet riverfront.
Right, but those, it, it doesn't look like those.
In fact, if it was back, it would be back in the flood.
Right, it, it would've been in the floodplain, it looks like.
Yeah, the other location.
Depending on where that, yeah, no.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of water safety and going down, the P, the professional engineer is going to be signing off on it that it's safe.
So we can, I mean, condition it that the, that has to be signed off by engineer, that it's safe, I mean, short of that.
Under.
Because, yeah, we do want it to be safe. And I know what you're saying about any changes, yeah.
Well, that's why I almost wanted Conservation to deal with that, because I'd rather them tell them it's not safe than us trying to deal with it and get a, somebody else to come in and peer review it to say it is or it isn't. in and peer review it to say it is or it isn't. Um, that's why I think, um, they have it in their order, uh, and that's why it's subject to their review before they do any work. Whether that, that's sustained or not, I don't know. So maybe we can make it subject to our order unless, unless Conservation's order holds, something like. I don't want to duplicate the work, I just want to make sure it's being done, and it's done by the people that know what they're doing and how, how to address it.
So, so it would more be under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. I, I'm not sure under, under 13 or 15, where, where, where you could condition it.
Now, I'm going to put you on the spot, Amy, to your own presentation that you gave to us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from my recollection of that presentation, which possibly happened in my bag, um, the, our decision to request peer review of specific items is not something that can be appealed, correct? Is that what you've said in the?
Correct, but it's, at this point, it's, since the hearing is closed, you cannot request peer review.
Okay.
We can request peer review of a condition. So if the condition is, uh, they have to satisfy the geotechnical requirements, a safe drilling in that area, and we'd like to have that, the results peer reviewed as a condition, we could do that, couldn't we? It's not opening it up. We just want to make sure that that's.
Um, that, that's not really the, under 53G, that's not really the, um, the purview, uh, peer review is when you're evaluating projects.
Okay.
Could we require that, that evaluation be undertaken by a firm selected by the town rather than the applicant?
So, so i- if I, if I may, if we go to 15 or 13, and I, I guess I'm still trying to find out, what are we under, what objective are we under for this?
Um.
So we, again, would it be maybe natural environment?
Adverse impacts?
Uh, well, as of water supply, drainage, sewage, irrigation.
Water supply, adverse impacts, health, that's kind of the general.
Okay, okay.
That's generally what I'm thinking, the frame of mind I'm looking at this under?
Adverse effect, impact to public facilities and services.
What would the public facilities and services be?
Water.
The water supply. Is there a well near there? Do we know?
This is all.
There's residential ones.
It's all underground water.
Was it the?
Um, not just.
Not.
It's not in a zone, correct?
It's in, it's in, uh, zone two.
It's a drinking water zone two?
Yes.
Okay, so there you go.
Yeah.
It's in the other map that we had.
I know.
We just had those, that's great.
Okay, this is.
So that would be, is that, would, so requiring that.
Yeah.
Review be taken by an independent firm or somebody hired by the town, would be something that we could condition?
All right, because keep in mind, we do hire, we call it peer review, for, um, post-decision when it's construction-related. So we can have a hoarsely-witten, a beta go out and review projects under construction and, and to help us ensure that the conditions are being met.
That's roughly what I'm.
Right.
Looking for.
Yeah.
Somebody who's.
Right.
Not connected with the project, and, again, speaking from my cynical hat, doesn't, may or may not have any interest in the project advancing beyond a certain point.
Right, and they're, they're under contract by the town, paid for by the applicant, but they're reporting to us.
Right.
So, like with Alnylum or, or Spears Manufacturing, those applicants paid for peer review that was conducted for us, to make sure that construction, whether it was stormwater, whatever else, landscaping was done appropriately. So we'd have to negotiate with them to see what they would do, but water monitoring, you know, I don't have a skill set to do that.
I'm not talking about monitoring 50 years, I'm talking about, I want to, the, I don't think something is put in the ground, I don't think these items they're going to put in the ground now are going to, the items are going to be, in my opinion, the items aren't going to be the hazards.
So we're not talking about geotechnical, then? We're talking about water monitoring?
The, the geotech affects the water, in my mind.
Okay.
So, it's drill a big, the idea being that we want to make sure they don't drill a big steel pipe into the ground and hop something underground or affect the groundwater in a way that's negative towards the people who are using that well, that kind of public utility of the, of the well. So that's where the intersection is.
Okay.
And that's where, I don't see that the galvanized steel pile is a hazard, that's where, this, the hazard, in my mind, is.
Running it down.
What?
Piling it down, pushing it down.
Right, pushing it down, and what happens when you do that.
So many.
So many, what you do that, and turning.
And why you hit.
The ground into a pankushin, essentially. So, what that does, and that's where I think the most focus needs to be. Once they're there, they're there, the idea is that they don't move, and they don't do anything else. So I think, yeah, something, as you mentioned, like a secondary review of whatever that is, whether it's the geotech report, or whether it's, um, what we're, what is being done with it, is something that I would like to.
Yeah, I think, we asked the applicant initially, and they said they hadn't done it yet. We were kind of surprised to find that out. And they said they were holding off to doing it. That's their call, and now they, they can make it a condition. That's satisfying.
Yeah, and if.
So it's going to be the requirement for a, um, a geotechnical report.
Which would already be, the geotech report would already be done as part of the construction.
Right, one hasn't been done yet, but they would submit a geo, a geotech report with findings that the construction, proposed construction will not, what?
Um.
And then we would have that reviewed.
Correct.
Okay, so what, so it's just that line that I'm missing, so.
So I think it has to be the, the, the drinking water within that area, because it's in zone two, so we want to make sure that it's not negatively impacting that zone or access to drinking water for any nearby properties. It looks like the nearest well is actually in Easton, um, except for those that are on, closest to the pond.
It is present town, though.
Yeah, but these down here are ours.
Yeah, so.
Is that east of it?
Right here in the wall.
Are we talking, um, would it be safe to say will not impact the, uh, quality and quantity of drinking water?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So they don't, so if something doesn't happen inadvertently, the flow of water changes, and all of a sudden these wells are dry. However, water acts, which, water is a weird thing, in my mind, I'm sure it all makes sense.
So if you drill beyond some.
Layer of something.
It will seep out, it will.
It could change the penetration, it could change the water table, it could change the flow of water, it, it could impact the floodplain.
Should we perhaps ask Jennifer for what that language is that we're asking them to qualify?
So.
I think quantity and quality is fairly.
I think that covers it.
That's good, that's pretty good, yeah.
I would say, I would say it covers it.
Okay.
Okay.
Because you are looking at both the quantity and the quality, so I think that's good, Amy.
Or, did you have anything else on your list in terms of broad topics that we haven't covered yet?
Talked about time.
Time for construction, or construction, like time today?
Time for construction, and limitations of how late that the, the operations can run, uh, to nine and 10, I don't, I don't know, the 10 is kind of late, I would say nine.
You're talking about the battery?
Construction?
No, they, they, leaving, operating their converters, the batteries.
Oh, the batteries, okay.
With noise, he said, uh, nine to 10 out, to nine, nine or 10 o'clock. I think, if there is noise, yeah, 10 o'clock is kind of late. I think nine, maybe 9:30, I suppose the difference, but certainly.
Well, if we're looking at conditions that limit the noise at the property line, I don't think that we should necessarily need to put that condition in.
Yeah.
I, I mean, if, if, if the noise is limited at the property line, then they should be able to continue all day, all night.
It's kind of an either-or, isn't it?
I know, well, that's what I mean, yeah.
If there's no noise, then who cares how long they run it, essentially?
Yeah, if there's no noise, what's the impact?
But depending on what we talk, what we do decide.
Yeah.
Addressing in terms of noise.
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
That's something that we can think about. And I'm sure that there are ways to program the battery or the computer to stop accumulating energy to meet whatever timeline you want it to.
Have we, and I didn't follow it, have we satisfied our, our, our concerns for screening? And is everybody, I don't know, I haven't looked at the last plan, and the neighbors, the neighbors that haven't been screened, so they didn't want screening, or are there any neighbors still looking to be screened?
My last take on that, that the majority of it was, and I think, again, I go back to, to adding berm where there's, where it will get the growth a little higher sooner, that should, that should certainly help.
I thought there were still issues at Fuller and Fairleigh.
Yeah, that's what I, I was going to note from the last time.
Is there, do they have planning rules?
Screening for 11 Fuller and 205 and 207 Bay Road.
Yeah, so they added this in, Orin, some, I think, here for the Bay Road section. Don't know if they changed this from 13 Fuller and all, I'd have to go back and look.
What about these people down here?
You do have a handbook.
Oh, you do? So this is all.
It's not just subdivision?
We have a handbook.
No, it's not.
What?
Regulations aren't a handbook.
The subdivision regulations?
Those are regulations.
Oh, yeah.
Are those part of the handbook?
No, it's not.
That you're talking about, so you have a different handbook?
Yeah, the handbook's more of like how you'd be on the planning board. There's everything from, like, meeting times and roles.
Okay, all right, that's not online.
I don't, I don't think so.
Construction review?
Yeah, that's more of a board document, I think.
I think I have it in my email somewhere.
I mean, I, I would also, I, I think if it's where it is, I would require that secondary screening, because based upon what they've provided, it will be noise at the visible levels. Without that screening, it's going to be noise anyway.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we, we should definitely, um, condition that there's, yeah, appropriate screening.
Yeah, and they've talked about adding those sound baffles anyway, and it's, I'm sure that it doesn't look pretty, but I'm sure that's a form of secondary screening, which would be fenced in or contained in some way.
Um, I just want to be clear, we, we, I think you had mentioned a couple of times, we're going to describe the, the nature of the, is it fixed, or the, the panels themselves, they're, you had mentioned.
They're tracking?
They're tracking, they track the sun.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they move every, I think they said 10 minutes.
Okay. Are we, is there something we're pulling off of their, their spec that we're going to require that they provide, that they maintain a certain tracking, or a certain type, can't be more than so many feet high? That's, that's in their proposal, I don't know that we have to make those requirements.
Yeah, I think it's 10, 10 to 13 feet, depending on the angle in which.
Yeah.
The panel is at, Orin.
Okay.
Yeah. It's in the, in the, in the plan, though.
Um, we talked about not, we can't require that they can't change ownership, but we can require that they provide the names and numbers for maintenance on change of ownership.
Names and numbers for maintenance at all times.
Yeah, so the names of.
And that'd be part of the operations and maintenance plan that gets filed, and, yeah, so that way.
There was something, uh, the neighbor Johnson, about his pool, and he was concerned about, is it truck traffic?
Mm-hmm, yep, he's so close to them.
I don't know.
I don't think that'd be something that we would condition, I think.
I think they made an agreement, did they?
The reason I mention that specifically is to basically make sure that the homeowner and the applicant met and discussed it, because there would have to be permission from that resident to do any kind of evaluation, like pre-construction evaluation of the property in any, in the event of any impacts of review after the fact. So I think that if they want, if the home applicant, if that resident or any other resident is concerned about impacts from the construction on their property, then they know what they have to do, they have to.
Yeah, and to my understanding, those discussions already happened.
They at least, they're at least in, they have been in discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would, I've raised it kind of to the point of, this is what needs to happen for something like this, rather than after construction, having an angry abutter who has damaged their property and didn't, and we don't have any way to verify what it looked like before.
I guess, um, I don't, do we need to provide for, you know, that kind of liability, that the, the applicant do responsible liability for any proven damage to the abutters, or is that the nature of, they could sue without having to have that condition anyway?
Private, yeah.
Um, time limit, the names, um.
When drives over my mailbox, then I.
Yeah.
There was a request that no solar, no other further solar development on the Faleen Farm site be provided. I don't know that we can provide that. I'm just going through some of the requests that I saw. Um, I think we, we're, we're all in agreement that some of the things about the monitoring, everything else is through the smart program. We can't condition, uh, this permit is conditioned on the smart program, and it's continued participation. It qualifies, they qualify under the smart program.
Yeah, and if the permit, say it is, say it is approved, and, and they're, they lose the smart program, then the permit would be.
Right. And the building commissioner would say you don't have.
Well, but we, we have to make that a condition to what we're doing. We're making a condition that they have to comply with.
A condition that they have to comply with, yeah.
And testing, screening, um, batteries, oh, I, I don't know where this came in, but there was one, I, I note that this cadmanium telluride panels, they agreed not to use them at any point, I don't know where that came from, but I've got a note, and they've agreed.
Oh, that was a, a certain type of panel? Yeah, I recall that.
And they agreed to it, I just wrote it down.
Yeah, I guess you mentioned the batteries, do we want to take up the issue of whether we feel batteries are allowed under our zoning?
Um.
My, and whether they're qualified as the accessory use? Because that's, I thought, I thought that the applicant's comment about calling out, like, storage under the bylaw was kind of.
Pushing it.
It was pushing it, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, because that could mean a toll share, and this is ver- it's very different. So I think that was stretching it, but I mean, does anybody else want to?
Um.
I tend to feel that it does fall into kind of accessory structure. It's certainly not, I'm not worried about whether the smart program will approve it. If they don't approve it, then the project won't happen.
Yeah, I, I think I'm more.
On the local level.
At this point, defer to the smart program, uh, because they have limitations, and whether or not by bumping it up with the, um, the batteries falls out of the program, that's their problem, and I think the smart program hopefully will address that. So I, I don't know that I want to go, although, um, I think that's an issue from the intent, I thought, of the, of the smart program, but anyway. But then there were a couple of things, and again, going through, some of the things Then there were a couple of things, again, going through, some of the things in the conservation order that I thought relevant, were relevant to us, and they've, they've referenced them, I think the broken panels, that be removed and replaced, they also, the use of.
That'll be part of the maintenance plan.
Right.
And they actually said not, it said road to replace, and they wanted some language in there to.
Yeah, they were concerned at the end of their term that they wouldn't replace them.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, then if reasonable, or something like that. There was the question about using the screw-in poles versus the.
And that's governed by the G O T.
Yep.
Right, okay, and then should the use of panels interfere with, those are the things, some panels. Annual reports, again, those, those would refer back to, I guess.
The smart program, and we could all look them up if we wanted to.
Yeah.
How many cranberries, they pulled a bog 12.
And then, there's a requirement in our bylaw that says utilities are proposed underground within or at the driveway dike shoulder, within the limit of work. And it said unless required by the, the utility.
In this case, they do. Well, they require it, they require it above ground at the interchange. They don't, they don't require it until that point, but.
But they're, they're doing it across the whole thing, they're doing it from the inverter all the way across.
They said they didn't want to trench that much.
Well, I don't know.
Which, yeah.
That's a question whether, that's a different visibility issue, too.
It is.
It's those poles, and I don't know how big they are, but they're pretty probably big and tall.
They're electric poles, yeah.
So that's another issue that I had.
Yeah, the screening of that is something that you can't screen really effectively, probably.
Right, and it's significant, so if, I guess if it's required by, then they can use it, if it's not, I would say put it under.
Yeah, I don't know whether you could, given like.
To screen the poles?
The access roads and the bogs and.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I don't think you could.
That's a bylaw, that's what the bylaw says. So I don't know that we're going to say you don't have to do that, if they have to do that, they have to get an amendment or a modification of the bylaw. But that's what the bylaw says, unless it, the install, the utility proves it.
And the utility does require it, so it's a matter of us saying whether we buy that they don't need to trench the whole way, because it's be required at the end.
That's, that's.
And whether that, yeah.
So we can talk about that some more.
All right, so we're coming up on 9th day to here, does anyone else have anything else to add to this? We have a lot to think about.
I do not think I am ready for a vote this evening.
I don't think, I, I can speak for myself, I'm not either, I think, I think I entertain a motion to table this and discuss it further, I know Amy was going to come back with some something.
I would just like some reconfirmation that the special permit is required, unless the project moves forward. And so it appears that right now, I, I would say that yes, it was applied for, and it appears from the plan that there's a corner of the inverter within the floodplain. So I, that's part of what I wanted to confirm with conservation. But I think that just because it was applied for, so I think it needs to be addressed. And it can be addressed in, in one of two ways, either by saying that it was applied for, therefore we're going to consider it and allow, you know, evaluate it, deliberate on it and make a decision on it, or you can say it's not required, even though it was applied for, it's not required. But I'm not really sure that that's, if, I'm not really sure that that's up to us since they applied for it. And it clearly shows on plans that were submitted to us that there is a corner of the inverter area within floodplain.
But so as to not perpetuate any confusion, special permit we're talking about is floodplain only, not the old special permit before zoning.
And not water resource protection, not Article 14 either, that was, in the first hearing, that was also considered.
Only applicable, only the applicability of floodplain special permit.
And I'm hoping to have more information on that, once I speak with. And as far as our agenda, when we do eventually vote on this, I would recommend that we vote on the special permit first, because if that fails, the site plan approval is not really, it's kind of null and void at that point, I would assume, is there? No.
No.
No, I, I think we have to vote on, we have to vote on both.
Okay.
I'd have to look at the remand order again, but I think the remand, the remand order.
Yeah, we can confirm that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not here on the 10th.
Would we have more, would we have more flexibility on the conditions we imposed under one or the other?
Yes. You have, under, under site plan, you cover more ground, you have, going back to site plan, you have, you know, you have four, you have four objectives to be met, natural environment, traffic, internal circulation, design, and landscaping. Under, under floodplain, because it's an overlay special permit, you're really only looking at, at the objectives of the floodplain overlay. So with site plan, you generally have the most leeway as to, because site plan is much more general.
I'm saying you can put it there, but we've got to tell you where to put it. More like, you have to write the.
Yes, yes, because it's an as-of-rate use, yes.
So you can put it in there, but we can tell you, you've got to.
How?
Where and how.
Not necessarily where, but, but how, because we, you can't say, oh, no, you have to put it here, and then come to find out it's in, it's, the whole thing's in floodplain. You know, we can't, we can't do that, but yes, you can, you can do screening, all that kind of stuff. In the event that one or the other votes do not pass, where do we need more findings to be discussed and kind of documented? So I recommend findings for both approvals and denials, and particularly in this situation where there could be a third party that's going to object to either an approval, obviously the applicant will object, object to any kind of denial. So it, it helps the court find, figure out where, where the board stood, what they, where they were coming from. So technically, I, I mean, there is case law that says that if the board denies something, they don't necessarily have to go through elaborate findings for it, but, but it helps, it does help. And then obviously for an approval, you have to make findings as to, as to what, how sections of the bylaw were met.
You said you're not available the 10th?
I'm not.
What about the 17th?
Yes.
So I'm assuming, I'm assuming there's going to be a motion to table this, I'd prefer it to be the 17th, so Amy can be back and assist with it, unless there's objections to that.
Do we feel that that timing is appropriate, given the remand?
We have 90 days from, from the close of the public hearing, so.
Okay, I'm just.
Did you, we check with Kevin, are those dates available?
Yes, yep.
The 10th and the 17th?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so for this particular discussion, it would be the 17th.
Paul, do you have any water available?
Yeah.
Paul, what does our agenda look like on the 10th?
We just continued the.
We haven't continued it yet.
Cumberland.
Cumberland Farms.
Cumberland Farms.
Is that the only thing on the agenda?
Uh, there's an A and R that just arrived yesterday.
But that's all at this point?
That's it.
Okay. So the 10th actually looks like a fairly late meeting. I'm not sure if, do we want to take some time on the 10th to talk through anything if we feel like it, maybe?
I, I'd prefer to push this to the 17th, I'd like to have counsel here for that.
For everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine, just understanding that.
Did you want to try and tell us about the dates in that?
Well, let's, let's settle this first, and then we'll.
Okay, so I make a motion to table, remand special permit 488 to September 17th meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Sorry, one more thing, no, but that's, that's on my.
Hold on, all right.
We're going to welcome Scott back. Hope you had a nice vacation. All right, we have potential changes to the zoning map and zoning bylaws, Henry Souza is here.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin by thanking you for putting me on the gen, the agenda for this evening. I know the hour is late, so I will be very brief tonight. This is essentially a courtesy call to you, to make you aware of two warrant articles that I'm going to be submitting on behalf of clients later this week. One warrant article deals with granting this board's special permit granting authority to allow a duplex or a multifamily housing project in a commercial zone. I might point out that that was something that was allowed of this board in earlier versions of the zoning bylaw, but which was removed. My research shows about the same time that village commercial zoning was adopted. And the other one, the other article deals with changing the zoning for a section of Smith Street and Mansfield Avenue. Property is currently zoned commercial, and the proposal is to change it to village commercial. And part of the reasoning for that is that the east side of Smith Street is already developed with houses that are now non-conforming uses. And the west side of Mansfield Avenue, number of residential uses there as well, but to say that that area is best used as commercial is, it's difficult to imagine as Route 140 has no sidewalks, there's no parking allowed on a state highway, you're across the street from the reservoir, and at the present time, surge does not go that far south. And as I said, this is a courtesy call to make you aware, Mr. De Giuseppe and I have had some conversations about this, but I wanted you to know it's coming. Obviously, if we get these taxpayer petitions filed to be on the warrant for the Fall Town meeting, there's going to be a hearing, and we can elaborate about it then. But I, I didn't want anybody saying, geez, why didn't Mr. Souza come tell us that it, he had a client that wanted to do this? So here I am.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, if anyone has any questions, happy to tell you what I know.
Remember, the Smith Street, is it, you're looking for all of Smith Street is impacted by your proposed.
From where Smith Street, the area would be from where Smith Street and Mansfield Avenue intersect on the southerly side, going up Smith Street as far as the trailer park.
The southern end of Smith?
Yes.
Or eastern edge of Smith, I guess?
Yeah, the eastern side going south.
It's an L, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it would leave northeast in Savings Bank Commercial, and then everything in that little peninsula, peninsula of land, I'm sorry, it's late, going south. The proposal would be to change that to village commercial. Keeps a mix of businesses and residential uses. Think it might make some of the people that live on Smith Street a little bit happier to know that, you know, there's not going to be somebody with a drive-through as a matter of right behind them, or, I'm not sure a gasoline station would work there, but if I lived on Smith Street, I, I wouldn't want to see a Firestone Tire Center in my backyard or something. I mean, you know, it's like.
Have you spoke to the residents in that area?
I, I've had, one of my clients has been out canvassing up and down Smith Street, getting some comments from the other residents, and a number of the people that have already signed the petition are property owners on Smith Street. So, and not, not just, you know, on a, not, not on a mission from the Lord to run rampant and reshape Norton in my image here, just trying to, just trying to help a client with a couple of things that seem pretty logical. You know, I, I'm sure you're aware, and Paul and I have had conversations about this, there's still places in Norton where a zoning district line bisects a property, and in giving you some special permit granting authority, if part of that property is commercial and part of it is residential, frankly, to me, seems like a no-brainer. So hopefully it'll seem the same way to you.
Is that, any of that area included in the redevelopment in the village, what are you calling it?
No.
No.
No, that's, that's north of there.
Yeah, so I, I try not to step on any toes of anyone here, just trying to do things to, you know, hopefully make a better community for everybody, you know, make things work a little better. I mean, I, you know, the, the history of zoning in Norton is the semi-annual change to the zoning bylaw. You know, my library goes back to additions that start in 1981, and, you know, it's, it's, with each addition, the, the number of, the fly pages that show all the changes just gets longer and longer, so I think we could safely say that it is, it is a work in process. Maybe, maybe someday we'll all get it right.
Well, and I don't know if this is adding to it or not, but as we, one of the potential outcomes of the master plan, once it's completed, is we will be having to take a good, hard look at that, at the bylaw. And oftentimes, when you complete master plans, that's one of the actions you take initially, because it takes a year or two or longer to, to, to do it, but, you know, as we look at the bylaws, we can see that it's almost, it's created, like you're pointing out, all these different amendments, so we have conflicting sections within it.
Ooh.
And it's taken me a year now to even begin to understand the structure of it. So, and it only gets more confusing the more we amend it, because no one has had the chance to go back and.
Scrub it.
Scrub it and think about it.
And start over.
How does this organize and navigate well logically?
Well, and you know, the other thing that I can tell you is that, like Mr. Fernandez, I've been kicking around here for a few years, I'm sure that he remembers when the discussion was, does Norton want to have zoning at all? And my dad and my uncle, as businessmen here in Norton, were on the original committee where they were talking about adopting a zoning bylaw for Norton, and.
So we can blame you?
Yeah, they're cast on now, you can blame them. But it's, it's, it's within our lifetime, but gosh, there are an awful lot of changes. You know, a comprehensive, comprehensive look wouldn't be a bad thing.
I'm reminded of the adage when I think of this, of the adage that a camel is a horse designed by committee, and that's what I think of.
Unless it's going to be a camel with two humps instead of one.
I always loved that description as well.
That's funny.
So if there's anything else I can answer for you folks, I will, otherwise, I'm going to bid you a good evening.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure you want to get home as well.
One quick question for you?
Sure.
What was the first potential bylaw change? You said it was to revert back to something that was earlier?
Um, right now, right now, if a property is zoned commercial, this board does not, if you look at the zoning bylaw, that little matrix of yes, you can, and this is a special permit, and no, you can't. Right now, there is no authority to grant a special permit to allow a duplex or a multifamily use in a commercial zone.
Is that allowed in the commercial zone, or is it allowed without, without a special permit?
It's not allowed.
It's not allowed, it's a no.
It's a definite no, and this would make it a special permit, the, the feeling being that there may well be properties out there that probably would be a better use as a residential, but might be zoned commercial or partially zoned commercial. This lets your board, when you determine that it is more advantageous than disadvantageous to the town, that under the right circumstances, if it makes sense for the town, you can allow it. But again, that, you know, you've got that special permit threshold, and as I know you have been ably told by town council this evening, that's a, that's a pretty good hurdle that gives you a very big stick to wield. So with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
We can have a, an expanded discussion when you have your hearing on the proposal. Have a good evening, and again, thanks for putting me on tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
So we got a couple of quick things. I, I failed to bring this up at the last meeting, but the charter commission reached out, they wanted to meet with us. They prefer to do it all together as, as a board, and, and I've been going back and forth, I believe they met last night, and they were going to try to figure out their meeting dates. We didn't have any scheduled past September, so likely sometime in October, we're going to have a joint meeting. I haven't, we haven't even figured out which day that's going to be yet, but just, that's on the horizon. So they want to know our thoughts on how this is run, things that could change, so just keep that in mind.
Just kind of how we do business?
Yeah. So it's just food for thought, you'll know well in advance before that's on the agenda.
I'm actually. I'm actually, I remember the date, I think it's the second Monday in September. They're asking all the department directors to, they've been interviewing them, so same sort of questions, what are your needs, what works well, what's not?
Yeah, they're going to meet with Paul separately.
Don't say anything bad about us, Paul.
No, my, no, not at all, I mean, mine, mine's, mine's going to focus on, mine's going to focus on some needs. Now, we met with the Easton, I met with the Easton Planning Director last week. Now, Easton has 23,000 people, we're at 19. They have three full-time planners and two admin. Like, we're one. In fact, until about four or five years ago, we had a part-time.
It was, what, two, two years ago, we, we tried to get that part-time person? There was nobody, it was just, it was just Tabitha, yeah, was it last year?
It was last year.
Last summer.
Yeah, wow, it was that short.
They have more, but they, she was surprised at the complexity of what we have. Theirs tends to be the, you know, special permits fairly straightforward.
With volume?
Yeah, there is a more like, you know, sweet stuffed pastry shop, you know, we, we were showing her, you know, Blue Star, the, the solar facility, so.
It's an interesting observation in its own right.
Right, but they're, they're doing, actually, they're moving, they're getting a lot of small businesses and smaller developments, so, but anyway.
All right, so that's, that's on the horizon. The, before I forget too, and I should have said this before we, before we table the discussion, just to thank the audience, I, I had mentioned beforehand that, you know, to keep comments and everything to a minimum, I think it was exactly how it was supposed to go tonight, so, everybody at home, thank you, I appreciate it, because they've left. For those who can't see. Did you want to talk about teleconference issue, or do you want to?
It's about remote participation. Mike, town manager, just wanted to bring that back up to see if, if that was something that you all were interested in, in pursuing, assuming we would have the right technical setup to, to do it. So remote participation would mean that you might not be here, but you could phone in, you could Skype in.
It would be under very strict reasons for it to, it would have to be, it couldn't just be because you don't want to show up, I know that there was a whole list of them.
Yeah.
Would that qualify as attendance at a meeting, or would we have to still go through that certification of watching it?
No, it qualifies as attendance, but you cannot qualify as part of the quorum, so you have to have a physical quorum in the room.
Okay.
Okay.
But you could vote.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that would be in a, in a rare instance for something like this, in the future.
I think it'd be good to have as a potential option, even if it's not something that we use on any kind of a regular basis.
Yeah, and that was my concern too, is that, you know, I, I don't think anybody on this board would take advantage of it, but, you know, you never know in the future.
It's so limited, you can't use it on a regular basis, really. I, I don't, I, I haven't seen any, any boards use it on a regular basis.
My main reason.
Establish that as acceptable, and then never test it until it's like challenged?
No, it, it's allowed, it's allowed under the open meeting law, provided the Board of Selectmen vote to allow it.
Would we go through a trial period to see how it works, is it effective, and then reevaluate, or we just say, yes, it's suitable, and then wait for an occurrence where it's really urgent, and then try and use it?
Oh, you mean like the technology?
Oh, I'm assuming they would set up the technology beforehand.
Yeah, you have, yeah.
Yeah.
Although I.
It's like, if we say, yeah, it's good, and then we do nothing about it until like we're forced into a scenario where it's now urgent, and now we're like.
The Board of Selectmen, I believe, are going to vote on this, right, is that? I don't even know if it's, if it's up for a vote, but.
But I mean, with the technology of a cell phone on the table on speakerphone.
Or being steep and simple.
Yeah.
Depending on who's there, it can be complex.
All we're doing, I think, is saying whether we would like the Board of Selectmen.
Understood.
Support it, I think, yeah.
No, I think they've already, Paul just said, I think they've already taken it up, so it's just, bringing it to your attention, it's, eventually will be an option. I didn't think anybody here, I mean, I can't speak for anybody here, but I'm not opposed to it, under certain circumstances.
Adoption theory is totally different than adoption.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think we should adopt. Practice, not.
It's difficult, it's, it's more, it's more beneficial to, to three-member boards, like your ZBI.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't, I, you know, I think, you know, we work best when we have these face-to-face dialogues, and we're, you know, conversing together. I can't imagine being on the phone and not being able to, you know, so much of conversation is your hand gestures, your movements, like, I can't imagine being on the phone and being like, is Scott at the table or not?
I, I don't.
When you accuse himself, I don't know, where is he?
Because of that, because of that, I don't do it with any of our boards for, for condo meetings, so.
No.
Just because you're, you're, oh, what did you say? I didn't hear, you know, yeah.
It's really truly only for emergencies.
Yeah, which makes sense.
Listen to the Selectmen discuss it, it's really if you're out of town, traveling.
Yeah.
You have to be.
No other option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've been trying to listen to the town center plan discussions remotely, and even though that wasn't a public hearing, since I, even though I had materials in front of me on the computer, it was still tough.
Right, right, it was, it's not.
Yeah.
So not to keep us here later, but that, I just want to make sure we brought that up. So what do we, now that everyone's here, what are we thinking for meeting dates for October? We have September 10th and 17th.
The first.
That's a holiday for me.
Which holiday is that?
Roche Shahn.
We can do the 8th and 22nd.
Okay.
Don't, don't say it.
I am actually.
What, what, which date is it?
Yom Kippur?
No, which date?
The 8th.
The 8th is, okay.
They're back-to-back weeks.
So we're, you're likely going to have to miss one then?
We could do the.
Just because it would be.
That'd be a really long gap, yeah.
Yeah, the last, the next one's the 17th, so, I mean, I, I don't want to push it further than the 8th, so.
Does that be three weeks?
What about everybody else, the 1st or the 8th? What are we thinking? Well, actually, let me say this, Warren, which one's better, the 15th or the 22nd for you? Are they both okay?
15th, I can't make.
Okay.
Yeah, 27th, either one.
Okay, so let's say, what do we think about the 8th and the 22nd?
I'm actually out of, out of town on the 8th.
How dare you?
Blame my wife.
Can't hate you.
You, you came to the 15th, right, Joe?
Oh, I, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So we're saying the 1st and the 22nd?
Yeah. You, you have to have a full board at some point.
Yeah, 1st and the 22nd.
Number 4. If we don't.
And is the consideration that we would have that joint meeting on one of those? So it would have to be the 22nd? Fair assumption based on your earlier statement?
More than likely.
Okay.
Unless, unless for any reason we can, we have time to post it for the 10th, if that's a later meeting.
Do we want to explore?
With the, yeah, the Charter Commission.
Do we want to explore the idea of doing it? Warren, Roche Shahn is two days, correct?
Yes.
Is it the 31st and the 1st, or is it the 1st and the 2nd?
It's 1st, 2nd.
Okay, and Yom Kippur is just the 8th?
Yom Kippur starts at 7 o'clock.
On?
The 8th.
On the 8th, and to the 9th.
And runs through the, through the 9th?
Through the 9th.
Would, would we, would we actually have the meeting room on the Monday, the 30th? If that was a possibility?
If it's a joint meeting with the other board, could we adopt there?
No, I'm sorry. It's Roche, I'm sorry, you're.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I want to plan out our meetings first, and then we'll.
The 30th and the 1st, I'm sorry, Roche Shahn is those two days. It's the 30th and the 1st.
The 30th and the 1st, okay.
Would we want to explore looking at the 2nd or 3rd, going off on Tuesday?
Good to find.
Well, we can, I mean, if, if this room isn't available, we can find somewhere else.
Yeah, I'm just, since we seem to have hit the 1st, the 8th, the 15th, somebody's not there any of those Tuesdays, so it seems to.
So what, so everybody's okay on the 22nd, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to lock in the 22nd. So now we have a meeting earlier in the month. How about the 2nd? It's a Wednesday.
That's good.
That's fine.
Yeah? All right.
Been calm like being here is my guess on that Wednesday, but.
Yeah, we can.
Break room or something.
Yeah.
We can find.
Or we can go to the media center.
10:20, 10:22.
2nd, 22nd, right?
All right, do we want to go into November?
Well, we all have it open.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, just because I want to have as many dates as we can to try to squeeze something in with the.
22nd.
Hold on a second.
So.
So let's say the 5th and the 19th of November?
Because that misses Thanksgiving week.
I'm out of town on the, on that week of the 3rd through the 8th.
Okay, so 12th and 19th?
That's fine.
That's a, let's say that's.
No, I don't want to do the back-to-back on the month.
Well, it's Thanksgiving week, so.
Or we do the 5th and the 19th, and Warren has to miss that one.
November 5th, selection day.
You cannot.
Election Day. So.
No gap on.
26th, we need turkey.
The 12th, the gap between the 22nd and the 12th would, would be three weeks, but it would be longer.
Do the club.
And it would be the back-to-back weeks, but we're going to have two meetings, I don't see, unless we go off Tuesdays again, and, and even then, we're going to miss Warren in that first week, so I don't see a benefit.
My other calendar's not on here, didn't download.
Any dates to do with Amy? Just decide already.
I can't meet the 2nd of October.
Yeah, let's, let's hold off, I know I have something one of those weeks, but my work calendar isn't downloading onto this.
We're going to get the other thing resolved on the 17th. It's my hope.
Yeah, I think we should. Okay, let's just keep the October ones, and in the next meeting, we'll.
So we just cut the two, October?
Yes, we have September and October.
You have to report back to the court on something by the end of this month?
On August 30th.
Are you going to have?
I would just report. But it's been closed.
Okay.
And I could, I was, that would be a meeting again on the 17th.
17th, yeah.